I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Haybald?
Here.
Commissioner Chambers?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
Commissioner Gerard?
Here.
Commissioner Salzweedall?
Here.
Commissioner Teaglander?
Here.
And Chair Zansdros Zansen.
I make a motion to excuse Chair.
Second. Okay. Approval of the agenda?
If they call the vote first.
Oh, here we go.
Yes.
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 Opposed? Okay, now we can go on. Approval of the agenda?
I'll approve the agenda, but I would like to have reverse old business and new business. Flip those two around tonight so these gentlemen could get out early and not have to listen to our old business.
Support.
Second.
Second.
So we got a vote on that one too? Okay, everybody for?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, approval of the minutes from previous meetings, September and October?
I'll move to accept the minutes of September 12th, 2016 as written.
I'll second. Okay, everybody? Yes for that or?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, public comments and community commissioner concerning items not on the agenda?
We still need to do the October 24th meeting, I believe.
Oh.
I think we have to. I'm not sure if we do or not, but.
Okay, October 24th meeting?
I'll move that we accept the minutes from the October 24th, 2016 joint meeting as written.
Second man? Okay, everybody opposed or? Or yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, opposed? Okay, now we can go to public comments. No public comments. Okay, old going to new business with Lake Michigan Credit Union?
Jack with Neerby, thank you. Guest at the planning commission chair, Mr. Zansdros, a deer hunter.
That's why he's here.
The rest of you aren't. Opens tomorrow. Jack Ma with Neerby, Steve Woody from our office was the engineer that worked on the project. He had to be at another meeting, nice and incredible for him. But the site here is about 1.4 acres between the Autozone and Graphic Sign. And the sign company is going to be splitting their property in half. We've applied for that to divide that parcel in half. It would be two equal parcels and this use would be in between those two existing buildings. It's a C3 zone district and our use in all aspects conforms with your dimensional and use regulations in the C3 district. About 3,000 square foot credit union building with a drive-through on the east side of the building, about 25 parking spaces. Your planner and your city engineer had some review comments that we think we can address simply with your staff. You're applying to approved with conditions. We think we can address those comments quite easily without altering the site plan. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
On that one, drain field is there? Why do we do a drain field there?
There's no sanitary sewer, so we have water main along the front edge. We're not connecting two, but no sanitary sewer. So the Autozone and the sign company both have drain fields as well.
Okay. Any comments?
The question I had was on the pedestrian access from the existing sidewalk adjacent to West Main Street. And there is none proposed at this point. And question is, obviously, there's more trails coming in, not only pedestrians, but also bikes, things of that nature. And I'm wondering if there is a way that it could be connected relatively easy.
There is a way. We don't see a ton of bike or walking traffic to the credit union, but to the credit union type sites. So we typically don't provide those kind of interconnections. Typically, people drive to these types of facilities. But one of these two kind of peninsulas in the adjacent to the parking spaces, I'm sorry, up along this side could easily be turned into a concrete sidewalk rather than a green space area to provide that connection. That's not a huge issue for us. We can do it, but we just don't see a lot of people typically walk into the site.
Bear with me, I can't see the fine type, but are you, is that Main Street up at the top up there?
Yeah, sorry.
So it would be the short eight, I mean, the short distance.
Yeah, so here's the sidewalk, either making this a concrete.
Right, whichever one will work the best in the fall and things of that nature.
We just didn't feel that. For this type of use, it's not a lot of people riding their bikes or walking to the bank.
Well, with the exception that there is a new bike trail planned right there and when more people are, you know.
Can be a park right by there too.
Yep, exactly. The more people are trying to, you know, use bikes and stuff like that.
We're not opposed to that.
Yeah.
Could you propose what kind of lighting you're going to be putting on that building? Because I didn't find any of that anywhere. Are you putting cutoff fixtures? Are you putting?
We will have those. So we have, I think, five, they're kind of identified on the plan here. One, two, three, four, five, three, five whole lights on the site. We haven't identified a specific fixture yet, so that would have to come back to staff for a specific fixture. But we did identify on the plan that they'd be full cutoff shoebox type style that comply with your ordinance. Just don't have the fixture to give you to say here what it looks like.
Is this particular building following your current kind of structures of other facilities?
Got architectural plans here, so yes, pretty typical Lake Michigan Credit Union facility as far as style of the exterior and cladding.
Very nice to look at.
Any other concerns? Any other motion to approve it? With your comments?
I'll make a motion to approve it with the condition where the walkway and using whatever is the most convenient and logical connection to Main Street there.
Yeah, I'll second that.
I'll move.
Well, I have a comment then on that. I believe, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your meaning, but I believe what he said was he was going to take one of the green spaces and make that a sidewalk. Did I hear you correctly?
Yeah.
So what that means is we're foregoing one of the green space areas. So I want to make sure that we're conscious of that if we're proposing a sidewalk.
Is that going, if it would be on one of those extensions that we're talking about, an extension of that, we're not changing that?
Well, you'd have to change it because right now we have these two areas there in the landscape plan. We show those as a green space, so we have to take that out and make that a hardscape for a sidewalk.
Oh, I see. I see what you're saying. I'm okay with it. I just wanted to make sure you were aware. I wasn't sure if you brought that.
No, I did not. And I, I'm fine with having, I'd rather have a sidewalk there just from the, once you, if you don't put it in there, you're never going to have that sidewalk.
No, I completely agree. I was going to make the same comment. You're leading to it.
Okay.
And just to be clear, does your motion also include the conditions outlined in our report to the planning permission?
Yes.
Okay.
Sir, we don't, we got to reapprove this again now?
Well, you guys haven't voted yet.
Haven't voted now?
So there's a motion, a second, and so now you guys just need to vote.
Okay, everybody approved or?
Yes.
Opposed?
Thank you for your time.
Now we go for the site plan review of Curtis Cleaners.
Good evening, John Curtis, Curtis Cleaners. We are proposing our dry cleaning building, a 4200 square foot addition, basically on the west side of the building. Majority of it for dry cleaning production. Also want to add on a, along with that, a parking garage building area for our building plans. Probably one of the things I do want to point out is they got a pretty big set of planes up there. But we do have proposed that we own the front parcel also. And they are separate, separate parcels. And that parcel is for sale. In the event if one of sales, we'll probably be drawing these property lines over. So right now we've got an easement. We plan on keeping whatever easement we need and maintain our minimal parking home. But there's a good chance that this property line on the northern part of the building in front of Cleaners Laundry may probably extend out. And with that, and this is just my thought again, depends on who buys it and what the needs are going to be. And then the strip of land between us and McDonald's, there's a little bit of chance that that property line is going to go all the way across. So part of this will end up with this property. We purchased all the different times and that's why it's all cut off the way it is. In the event when that does happen, we plan on taking this, we'll call it the little flag area back here, and develop the parking that we need for ourselves at that time. We actually need more parking than what the ordinance requires. So it's a, it's a problem I have, yes, but the chances are we're always going to be providing more parking than what the ordinance is going to call for. So that's kind of a future plan. Again, I didn't want to redraw that property line at this time and then have someone come along and, you know, there's a chance it could be shared parking there. I just hope that happens.
Any comments for that?
I would actually make a similar comment about a connecting sidewalk.
After listening to the last one, I think it'd be very easy. Right now we've got a sidewalk all in front of the building itself. And if you keep going, to me, it looks like the most logical place to put it. But we would just carry that right on through to the sidewalk on Valley District Drive. Again, we're kind of like a bank, not too many people walk to the.
Is that where your parking is too, coming off of Valley?
That's where, that's where, that's where our parking is right now. So we'll have them park, you know, obviously we have more land out there, you know, right in front of McDonald's and stuff.
And it doesn't make sense to go off Main Street because that's, that's the one you're going to sell.
Right, right.
I agree that Valley District would be.
So you're not going to drive through the side anymore?
Drive through is going to be gone. Correct.
Can I ask why? This is a silly question, but you're proposing putting a new eight and a half by eight and a half wood shed in there and you're building this new addition?
It's a, it's a smoking shed for a place.
Ah, okay.
Not for me though, right?
Well, it just says new shed.
Yeah, we talked about even just leaving that one there. Take it, I mean, the new one ends up being about a foot off of the existing one.
Is it an actual shed or a lean two type?
It's like a lean two type thing, yeah. It's just something to get them out of the weather. You know, they can't smoke inside, obviously, so it's, that's what it's for.
Is there any landscaping plan at all or?
There is. Andy and I talked about that. We're pretty much going to remove all the trees along Valley District. Actually, Light and Power just took out two of them because one was getting under transformer and all everything. And the other one was getting up into the line, so they thought they were going to probably take them down. They usually do. Now, go ahead, you can take them all if you want. And we actually have a beautiful little loose grove, but it's just, it's crowding that sidewalk. You can't really get around it. They trimmed that back. So rather than trying to mishmash that, let's just take them all out. Right now we have the five trees proposed there. I think that's one of the stipulations Andy put in there. We need to do a little bit more landscaping, but again, talking to Andy, there's just not enough space to put everything that's required in that little area there. So we're going to end up counting all our trees and our bushes, getting the light power again to see how they, how far away we need to beat my transformer. I think it was 12, 15 feet. And maybe put some bushes around that, but again, far enough away so they can get in there and service it and get to it. And then we've got some trees on the other side of the building. We need to come back and I think that's going to be one of the stipulations with a, just a good solid landscape plan.
Are you going to look at the dwarf trees so they don't have to come down in 30 years from now if they get up?
Absolutely. We're going to stay, we're going to stay away from the power lines. We're not even, I don't know if they identified what.
No, that's all right.
Flower in arsenic, flower in territory.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Slow growing, yeah.
And I got with the arbor board on it too, you know, they didn't like the thought of cutting down existing trees. But it'll just look much nicer along through there because eventually that'll be our front yard, so.
Any other concerns?
With that, I'll make a motion to accept the plans as presented with the change in the sidewalk.
The sidewalk and also the landscape plan to be approved by Andy or a planner, whoever does that, I guess. I'm not sure who would. The addition of the landscape plan.
And those are mentioned in the list of recommended conditions.
Correct.
Okay, all those approved?
Yeah.
Yes.
All those opposed? Okay.
Good luck.
All right, thank you all.
Okay, now we can go on to hold this. You've done a lot of work on that. Andy, want to go through that one?
Yes. So back in, gosh, on October 6th, I sent you guys a draft of chapter four of zoning ordinance, general provisions with my comments. I didn't, if you guys recall back and I guess it would have been September now, or maybe it was August. I don't know, it was a while ago, seems like. I provided you guys with the draft or markups. There's lots of strikeouts and deletions and everything like that. So this sort of consolidates all that, gets rid of all the strikeouts. So highlights the new language in those sections that are changing. I didn't provide a lot of significant changes elsewhere, but there are a few things that I want to go through with you guys. A lot of the stuff we've already talked about, like the height exceptions, including wireless communication antenna, the language in 4.02 on the second page about the principle, about one principle used on a lot, the language in section 4.07 for fences and walls. That's something that's, we've been looking at that pretty carefully because we do get quite a few requests for zoning permits for fences and stuff. Sometimes people put up fences without asking, sometimes they do ask. But, and so there are a few sections of the ordinance currently that we struggle with, with three-year penalty setbacks for privacy screens. And the way the language is written for privacy fences is really confusing and doesn't make a lot of sense to me because it requires gaps in the fence for some reason. So we're proposing here in section 4.07 to kind of clear all that up a little bit. You know, allow for, you know, a fence in your front yard would be listed to, would be limited to 36 inches if it's greater than 50% solid and no higher than 48 inches otherwise. And it allows for a 72-inch fence, which is a typical six-foot, you know, privacy fence kind of thing in a backyard. But it would not allow something like that in a front yard, any part of the front yard. So if you have a 35-foot front setback anywhere in that front yard, whether it's on the side or the front, you wouldn't be able to have a fence that tall just because it cuts off views and things like that. And frankly, it makes, you know, in certain areas, it makes it a little bit less attractive, less walkable, less comfortable to walk down.
And when you have a corner lot, is the front then considered the street address? Like my, I am letting my father find North Jefferson's. Jefferson would be the front and then north would then be the side?
Technically, right now the ordinance says that the front, if you have a corner lot, you have two fronts. You have a primary front and a secondary front. The primary front is the shorter of the two.
Which would be on Jefferson, yes.
So Jefferson, in your case, then Jefferson would be your primary front. So how we deal with that in zoning with three-year of these fences is that, the other thing is that on your secondary front yard, instead of having two front setbacks, so we don't, so it's, so we don't make you be 35 feet off of both, on your secondary front yard, the required setback is half of what it is on your primary. So that then lets people have a privacy fence, not one that extends all the way out to the sidewalk, but it does allow it to extend half, you know, out towards the road further by 50% more than it would be able to normally.
Yeah, I have a unique property because my sidewalk on that side doesn't go all the way up to this grandfathered in. So I got 40 feet of sidewalk, 90 feet of non-sidewalk. Not that I'll ever put a fence, but just in case it came up and somebody else had the same circumstances.
Yeah, those are certainly things that we think about. Well, the language, I think, is okay right now the way it is as far as the, what's your front and how many front yards you have. But when we, that's actually set up in the definitions and so when we do look at that chapter, we might look at clarifying that just to make sure that it's a common sense sort of provision because sometimes we'll see that the house faces a certain direction, is addressed a certain direction, but technically that's their side yard and then everyone gets all confused. And so we might look at revising that a little bit just to, you know, allow for common sense to take over, especially when in a place like Lake City of Lowell where most of your residential lots are built on already. Let's see, what else did we change here? So one thing that I did check into in 4.08, we talked about this a few months ago, was subsection C says no part of an accessory building shall be used for, as a dwelling for residential purposes. You guys asked that I checked it, do a few other similar communities and I found that people are all over the map. I think it was Rockford and I believe, I want to say Coopersville, neither of them allow accessory dwellings. One other one does, as long as it's like above a garage or something. And a lot of them have some kind of square foot limitation as to how big it can be, so it's not. Or some of them will just say that it can't be larger than the accessory building or the principal building. Clear? Your accessory dwelling can't be bigger than your house, basically. It can't be taller than your house. A lot of places have standards that say you can't have a separate address, you can't have a separate sewer, water hookups, stuff like that. So it's very clear that you're not really having two houses separately. It's tied together with same hookup, the same address, one address, same everything. So for now, what's left as being prohibited is something you can certainly request that we allow if you're inclined to allow them. So far as I know, we've only had maybe one that I can think of, one person that sort of wanted to do that. And since he couldn't, he ended up attaching the two and it worked that way. Just made it be one dwelling basically by attaching it. So we don't get requests for it a lot, but it's conceivable.
What constitutes an attachment to be an actual structure?
It has to be, there's actually some language in here that talks about how it's got to be, at least I think we have it in here somewhere, it has to be sort of architecturally seamless. So you can't just take like a two by four, attach it each day and say, there we go, it's attached. That's not going to work. I mean, it has to be substantially.
That to be enclosed can be a catwalk or what?
I think we require them to enclose it if I recall correctly. Because I wasn't even comfortable with just a door catwalk. I mean, it was, it was enclosed, insulated, double line yard to make it. So it's really an integrated cohesive looking building, so. But again, that one is up to you. Lots of places allow them, lots of places don't. And you know, when you're out of the ordinary, if you guys do either one, it's kind of whatever you're comfortable with and what you think is appropriate for City of Lowell, I think.
Well, to me, as you see, a lot of families moving in together, maybe it's your mom, your dad, or your in-laws are moving in with you. They like to have their own special space. You know, if they fit your house, maybe that'd be a solution. So I guess it's open for more conversation later as we discuss all the options. We've seen that more and more.
They used to call them mother-in-law apartments, didn't they?
Yeah, grand flats. There's some common terms, we're already on with the mother-in-law house, so. Sometimes they use them, I think a lot of times they've actually used them for like their, you know, maids and their hired help, if you will, would live on the same lot too, so. You guys want to keep moving on?
Yeah.
I think as we talked about before, the chapter that probably got the most significant overhaul was non-conformities. The section 4.13. Again, I know this is, this is pretty dry as far as zoning and stuff goes. But basically what I tried to do here is just simplify the entire section and make it a bit more understandable. So we have under section A, I'll read all of this over again, we've done this a couple of times now. But section A just kind of sets forth some fairly general provisions for non-conformities that apply to everything, whether it's a non-conforming building or non-conforming use. And then subsection B is a bunch of things that apply specifically to a non-conforming use. So if you like, you know, a business in a residentially zone neighborhood or something, or on a residentially zone parcel. And so those have some limitations as to if you want to expand one, they have some limitations on how much you can expand it. For non-conforming buildings and structures, again, that's if your, if a house is built with us, with any required setback or something like that, that would be a non-conforming building. And so again, there, this is where the, there's usually a number involved. So if more than 60% in Lowell's case of the non-conforming building gets knocked down due to a fire or a tornado or something, then they can only put it back if it complies with everything. So that means they might have to redo the foundation or even redo the whole nine yards. That 60% number is about average from what I see. I've seen as high as 80 and as low as, you know, 40 or 50%. So that number's kind of middle of the road as far as what I've seen there. And then the last thing that I did both for non-conforming buildings, I think, yeah, non-conforming uses, is we have, we get requests a lot for people that want to do an expansion of a, of a non-conforming building. So it's built too close to their front setback, but they want to expand it anyways and some ordinances prohibit that. And so what we typically do is we allow that as long as you're not making that non-conforming issue worse. So if you're built too close to your front setback, we're not going to allow you to add on the front. You can add on the back, that's fine. So that's where under, I want to page, on the last page of the section 4.13, number seven, it says, "A non-conforming residential structure may be larger or increased as long as it does not increase the degree of the non-conformance." So it's kind of a double negative there, but what we're saying is that you can't make it worse. You can't make it more non-conforming. And then the last one is non-conforming lots, which is another thing that we deal with fairly frequently, especially in built-out communities like Lowell that have a lot of small parcels. And there are, I'm sure, dozens of parcels in Lowell that don't meet the required lot area or lot width requirements of your zoning ordinance. And so what we need to do is make sure that we're still allowing reasonable use of those properties because if we don't allow them to use the property because it's too small, because our rules say it's too small, then we've effectively taken it away. And obviously, we're not interested in doing that. So we allow them to use a non-conforming parcel as long as they be 80% of their setbacks and they can use it for any permitted use in that district. So let's say hypothetically, one of the folks that were here tonight were on a non-conforming lot, which they weren't, but if they were, we still could have approved them as long as they were being setbacks. So that allows for, you know, fairly, quite a bit of flexibility. So that allows for, you know, fairly, quite a bit of flexibility there, allows us to sort of allow people to use their property, even though if you're making a parcel today, if they're trying to create that lot, we wouldn't permit it. And then under number two there, basically, if you have two non-conforming lots that are side by side, and neither of them are conforming, then as far as zoning goes, we treat them as we want. And again, that, that helps us to, you know, kind of force these lots to get bigger and sort of dividing them.
Andy, on our record here, under D there, you've got two ones.
Uh, which page are you on?
I'm on page twelve, but it's non-conforming lots of record, and you've got a number one, and then you've got another number one.
Okay, I'll take care of that.
Which obviously affects the rest of it.
Mm-hmm.
So Andy, I've got a couple of questions-
Sure.
-in that section, and forgive me if we've gone through this before, I may have missed a couple of meetings, but under the general provisions, section A, number two, basically, the language applies to land, building, and structure, whereas if you go to the third line, there's a reference, actually, we start at the end of the second line, it says, "Time, the use, no, at the time, the use of land or structure." So I'm wondering, was there a reason why building was not omitted in that?
Um, not really, I mean, it's, we can certainly change it so it's consistent. All buildings are structures, but not all structures are buildings, if that makes sense?
No, I get it.
So a structure is a broader term, there is no reason, in this case, why building was omitted, because if it says structure, the building literally qualifies that.
I thought maybe it was done on purpose.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So I'll fix that one, though.
And then number seven, I'd like to ensure that I understand that. As I read that, it basically, I'm reading that as there's no transfer of ownership? So if the lot, or if the non-, I should say, the property changed its ownership, then the non-conformance approval before is then been rescinded?
No.
That's not true?
No, transfer of ownership is permitted. So it says, "Change of tendency ownership or management of any buildings, blah, 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 shall be permitted."
Oh, whoops.
So, yeah.
Never mind.
Okay, yeah, the non-conforming rights are fairly, can be fairly important, I think, as you guys realize, so it's definitely, definitely important for us to make sure that we're allowing those to continue until-
Well, that always applies to the parcel or land not-
It runs with the land, or the building, or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, I misread it, I apologize. And then also, then, on the next page, under non-conforming uses, number two, C, and then number one, basically, it's talking about disconnection of utilities. Should, is there a reason why there wasn't a time dependency built into that? Because technically, if, you know, they miss a couple of payments, they have the utility cut off, then this would, this would come into play.
Yeah, I mean, so what items one through five here do is, it's not enough typically to just, to rely strictly on some passage of time, there has to be some sort of intent to abandon the use or the property, so in determining if it's been abandoned, these are the criteria that we look for. So if you, if you miss a utility payment, but you're humming along, otherwise, just fine, we're not going to, we're not going to interpret that as an intent to abandon your building or your use. But if there's some combination of factors, like the utilities have been shut off, or they just, maybe they just stopped paying them altogether and just walked away, and it's falling apart, or they've taken on their signs, or something like that, or it's just completely stopped operation, then we can say, "Okay, this has been abandoned," and then we can, that's when we start running that twelve-month clock to figure out when those non-conforming rights would sunset on the property. So the-
Okay.
So, yeah, the preceding paragraph there, C, talks about reestablished, or it says, "A non-conforming use of a building or structure shall not be reestablished after abandoned or discontinued for a period of twelve months." And then it says, "A non-conforming use shall be determined to be abandoned if one or more of the following conditions exists, and which shall be determined to constitute an intent on part of the property owner to abandon the non-conforming use." So what we're looking for here is, it has to be determined to be abandoned, and that has to continue for a long period of time. Thank you. I did have a few comments from the city's engineer with regard to the private road standards in here, I mean, there's not a lot, but there were a couple of things that he wanted to call out to you, let me get his comments here. One thing that a lot of, and we don't see a lot of private road applications here, I don't think, I mean, I've never done one here, and I don't know that we have done one in many, many years, but there are a few, a few kind of typical standards that we usually see in these private road ordinances or regulations that I think are important. For example, one thing that's not listed in the city's ordinance is some kind of provision that says that the name of your private road can't be something that's substantially similar to something else in the county, so if, you know, we don't want somebody, you know, building a private road on the east side of town, and calling it, you know, Valley the Star, or something, because that one is just gonna get confused, and, you know, if you're calling the fire department, it's gonna be a huge problem. So that's something that is not in your ordinance currently, that probably should be. A lot of ordinances also require a stop sign at any intersection with a public road, which is not in your ordinance, and some ordinances also include posted speed limit signs of, you know, twenty-five miles an hour or something, and also talk in some detail about design speed, I think you guys have some of that in here, with regards to the overall design speed of the private road, it should be twenty-five miles an hour is usually what would be suggested, I don't know if we call it that in here or not, but if it's not, we would suggest having an overall sort of design speed for a private road, and having posted speed limit signs in there. And the last thing that we can do, there's a few cosmetic, you know, sort of minor changes to make, we can provide some sort of street cross-sections, if that would help the city, just to sort of get a visual for what the grade would look like, and what the overall design of the street would be, lane widths and so forth. I don't know that your private street ordinance has a maximum grade, so usually it's six percent, seven percent, maybe eight occasionally, but usually not deeper than that. I don't think your private road ordinance now has any sort of maximum grade attached to it, which for sagey purposes usually isn't a bad idea, especially Michigan, and in what your time. So those are just some suggestions, if you guys want, we can certainly incorporate those into this language as well. But before I went crazy and started changing stuff, I wanted to talk about those with you guys. Again, generally, I don't anticipate that we're gonna use this ordinance a lot, to be honest, but you never know, I mean, there certainly is still some places where one could build a public street, I know Sue and I have had conversations with some folks who were wondering if that was a possibility, if they could split up a few lots and have a small private street, so there is some chance or some potential for one to be used, but I don't think it's gonna be something that will come up, you know, really frequently like it does in a, in a, in a Virgens or a Lowell township, where they're doing a lot more residential building.
Yeah, is there anybody that reports new roads to, like, fire and everybody else, please?
Well, I mean, if someone builds a new road, yeah, I mean, whoever-
Private roads?
Yeah, if they, if someone does build a private road, then yeah, there's, like, if it happens in Virgens Township, which actually is happening very quickly, or it will be soon, one project in Virgens Township, they are required to submit and get permits from the county, and I'm not sure how, or if it somehow, I'm sure it gets back to Lowell, police and fire department, I don't know how exactly it gets there, we haven't gotten that far in this particular process yet, but there is a, there is a process, yes, for notifying all the typical agencies that would need to know about new roads.
Is there a way we can put that language in here? That way, if the developer comes, it is his sole responsibility to notify the fire department, and the police department that he is putting the road in. We had that discussion when we had our joint session with Lowell Township, and that was something that got brought up, so if we can at least get that corrected here, that'd be a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, there might be something in here already, I will double-check, though, to make sure there is something like that, that does allow that. And typically, from a planning perspective, what we usually see most with private roads is, aside from the design criteria, are, it's important to make sure there's some sort of reasonable method for them to maintain it and pay for it by themselves, so they don't just forget or not, you know, residents that buy it, eventually, they're gonna have to pave it again in twenty years or something, so making sure that there's a reasonable plan for upkeep, and that they're collecting money and setting aside money to actually pay for the maintenance of their own road is important, so that they're not asking the city to do it at some point in the future, and you gotta set up a special assessment or something, and then that can turn into a headache, give you back some-
Are we saying here it needs to be asphalt or some form of government? Because I know a lot of them are gravel roads out there, and-
It depends on-
I know there's an association for each homeowner to maintain that through a fee.
Yeah, so anything, yeah, I mean, anything serving more than three dwelling units has to be a paved private road, that is either surface with asphalt or concrete in a manner satisfactory to the city, so, but when those, that kind of application work had come in, we'd send it over to the engineer's office, and you'd have to make sure that their, you know, their construction standards and the way they're building it is acceptable, so it's not holding water.
What's the difference between a private drive that supports two or three people, or a private street that supports the same number of people? Is there any particular difference?
What do you mean?
Well, I mean, I could have a private drive that might have, I'm the farthest house, but there might be four or five hundred people that could build off my right-of-way back there, so is that an alley street, or is that just a private drive? What determines the factor in that, maybe it's not an issue?
It's determined by the number of properties that derive their access from the private road, so if it's just, if it's just one house, if like, there's a twenty-acre parcel, and there's one house on it, there's a, you know, thousand-foot driveway, basically, running to that house, that's fine, it doesn't have to be a private street, but if that person owns that twenty acres, so I wanna split off, you know, do a little condo and split off seven lots on it, that are all gonna share my driveway, then you say, "New, you have to upgrade your driveway and make it a private street in that case."
Okay, just wanted to know.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, also, I would think that the other requirement would be that if the street doesn't meet the city standard, then it would be a private drive. I would think that would be another part of your question, too, is, I mean, I would think any street that doesn't meet the standard, you'd have to deem it a private drive.
Both acceptable, private and, okay.
So with that, I will, I'll make some of these changes to the private street section, I'll fix a couple of formatting here, things that you pointed out, and, do you guys, do you want me to do anything with accessory dwellings at this point, or just kind of think about it, or I can propose some language, and?
It'd be kind of nice just to get some language up, so we can look at it, start that process, and get that done, and then we can keep moving on through all of those.
Okay, I'll try to get you a fairly complete draft of all this stuff by the-
Agreed.
I don't have anything in December, so for the January meeting, we'll get, we'll have, hopefully, a fairly complete draft here that we can move forward with, and then next year, yeah, we can look at your chapter, and kind of move on.
Sounds good.
Being new here, what's the procedure here, actually? Do we then pass this on to the city council, for approval, I assume?
Yep.
And do we, do we also want to make a recommendation that we do more than just one chapter at a time? I would suggest we at least think about that, how we want to approach that in the long term, I would think city council will go nuts if we keep, you know, throwing a chapter at them every month, or something like that, I would.
We'd go nuts, yeah.
I, I mean, I would, I mean, it would seem more logical to have-
Multiple chapters at one time.
-a package of stuff.
Just takes a while to go through it all.
Right.
Right, and I'd like to make sure that we hit some goals this year, this year, it seemed like there wasn't some goals we didn't hit, we said we're gonna do this, 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 we didn't get there, and so we're starting a whole brand new year now, I want to make sure we, as a team, get some things forward and forward, even if it's one chapter, two chapter, three chapter at a time, but let's keep moving forward.
You sitting on the city council, it would be nerve-wracking to keep getting a single every time, and if you've got multiples, it's easier to do three, two or three sections of it at once, and then just keep moving on, so.
Well, this was one of the longer, more involved chapters, to begin with, two of the other chapters, in many cases, may not be quite as, I would think, seems like it would be a little bit easier, so.
I mean, there are, I would agree, there, most of the rest of the ordinance won't be too complex, except for maybe definitions can get pretty nitpicky, and there, as I've been thinking about this, and actually, as I was reviewing these last couple of site plans, and we have some landscaping standards that are kind of scattered all over the place, we have some landscaping standards in our parking section, for parking lot landscapings, and the C-three standards, we have some landscaping standards in there for properties that is on C-three, I think we have some for properties that is on industrial, so I'm thinking about consolidating all that landscaping stuff and adding it to this chapter four, and then we can take it out of the other chapters, so it's a bit more streamlined, as far as when you're looking up what you want to do, you can just, you know, see what you want to do, and then we can add a reference to landscaping in each chapter, so it's kind of clear what we can do, but the overall goal for me is just to make this thing a bit more user-friendly, and as we've been working with it for the last, I mean, as a company, we've been working with it for nine years now, there's a few kind of familiar trouble spots, we're hitting a bunch of them just with this, but I think there are some others that have kind of routinely had some challenges from an administration standpoint, so it'll be good to try and hit as many of those as we can, but I'll keep working on this, and get you guys some draft language, and we can continue moving.
We were talking about fences, and are hedges considered a fence? Could that be a problem at any point in your mind?
Um-
I would think it was, it's six foot-
I don't think so.
Hedges at the property line backing out would be an issue, I think that it would still fall under to this far, then you go back, now you can have a seven, eight-foot hedge, because those trees can grow eight, ten feet, I don't know what type of hedges you're talking about.
I mean, not-
Just a thought, just a question.
Yeah, I mean, not typically, I mean, I guess it depends on how you define fence, so in your ordinance, it says, "A barrier intended to prevent escape or intrusion, or to mark the boundary," but then it goes on to say that such barriers are made typically of posts and wider awards, so a hedge, probably not, but at the same time, I mean, if it was a, you know, arborvit-y type of thing, it was just a straight, solid, pruned to a perfect little cube sort of thing, then we might change our minds and say, "Oh, yeah, in that case, that actually looks like it's pretty much a fence." So some of those things, you have to look at on a sort of case-by-case basis, and make an interpretation in the ordinance, basically.
Is that typically, so that can change?
Is where we act, still going through here yet, or?
I think that was pretty much the end of it, if I recall. I think that was pretty much the end of it, if I recall. The stuff, there were a few things towards the end, but none of it was significant. There was a little addition I made in, in the end of section 4.23 on canopies and awnings, and that was it. And like I said, I might add some landscaping standards on here, just move them from all sorts of the ordinance, just so they're all in one place. Other than that, like I said, the overall changes are actually fairly modest, most of this chapter works pretty well, but there are just those handful of sections that are confusing for the public, and Sue and I have sometimes pretty long conversations trying to figure out how to administer this thing, and it makes sense, so we're trying to clean that up, so it's less confusing for everybody.
To answer your question on the bushes, under section 4.06, clear vision, it says, "Except for lots, no plantings, fencing, or other obstruction shall be established or maintained in any corner lot which would obstruct the view or vehicle driver." So, it does, at, at least partially, it is brought up there. It's fourteen point oh six, clear vision, A.
Which page are you at, Bruce?
It's page three.
Page three.
Yeah, it says not, no more than thirty inches high.
Right, exactly, that's pretty standard.
Good catch.
So, I, you know, I, it at least establishes that.
It has something in there, yeah.
Right. And you can always build off of that if we need to. That would be your call.
We'll pretty much just table this till January, then?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we need a motion or anything.
No.
But, yeah, just keep working at it, and we'll, we'll, we'll buy a draft in January.
And should we put something in on the next chapters we want to work on, then?
Didn't we have our wish list?
I think we established seventeen was up there. I'm pretty sure that was the next one on, on the list.
So, we can put that in the.
Whatever seventeen.
Special land uses.
Yeah. Want to kind of look into that in January also?
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly, yeah, I can get some markups going, and at least with, I mean, chapter seventeen is, is pretty long, because it has the process for special land uses, and then there's a whole, you know, twenty or more subsections that talk about, they have standards for, for specific special land uses, so for cell towers and, I don't know, sand mines and gravel mining, you know, all this other stuff, there's a bunch of specific standards for, for that. So, this, the whole chapter is probably, I think, be thirty or forty pages, so I don't, I don't want to give you that much at, at once, so I might at least, at first, just focus on the process part of it and make sure that that's all clear.
Right.
We're sort of covering everything that we, that we need to cover, so I can certainly prepare that for the January meeting as well, if you'd like.
Okay, move on to the staff report.
Why did we get a letter for the new post tower on Vergent? Was that just as a courtesy, or?
Yeah, yes, it was. It just was addressed to the planning commission, so I thought I'd pass it out.
Other question I have is, it was very helpful to have the yearly calendar of when the meetings are. How do we establish that? I have no clue how it was established, but I would assume if we're going to do a January meeting, we ought to set it up now, or have somebody set it up, whoever does, I don't know.
Sue does it, don't you, Sue?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, in January, then, we can adopt all the meetings for the year.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Something's good to me. But meetings are always second Monday unless you're told otherwise.
Yeah, right.
So, you have, ACT requires that your first meeting of your year, you adopt an official schedule of your regular meetings.
What, what are we looking at for January?
I'm seeing the ninth on my calendar.
Okay, yes, this is the second Monday of the month.
Yeah.
Does the city council meet on the second, then, the Tuesday, since the Monday is the first, so it'll be Tuesday?
It'll be the third.
The third?
Yeah.
Okay.
Two to the third.
All right.
Yeah, gotcha.
Any other comments? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right. Seven fifty-six.
Five to five.